Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A call to order, this Stratford Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing at 7:00 PM. Just a little housekeeping. If you have a cellphone, please put it on silent alert or turn it off. That way, it doesn't go off and disturb the speakers or the commissioners if they're asking questions. For those of you who have not appeared before this board, the way that it will work is a member of the commission will read the petition into the record, read the application. The applicant will then make their case for what they are presenting. I'll then ask anyone in the audience if they want to speak in favor, if anyone wants to speak against. Then, at such time, everybody's been given an opportunity. The commission will then close that portion of the public hearing, and we may or may not take that case up at our administrative session, which is open to the public directly following this meeting. Another piece of housekeeping, I did have an opportunity to speak with Commissioner Baird. He is on his road to recovery, he is feeling better, however, he is not able to be with us this evening, so alternate Commissioner Doolin will be sitting in on Mr. Baird's place. With that having been said, first petition on the -- oh, if you are here for petition number four, which is 7050 Main Street, that petition has been withdrawn by the applicant. There were some inland, wetland issues that arose, and as a result, they did not want to go forward with this evening's public hearing for their requests for zoning Board of Appeals waivers. So that will appear, is it our next meeting or at a future date? So they will attempt to get it to us for the October meeting. So if you're here for 7050 Main Street, there will be no business taken on that this evening. Commissioner Lewin will be so kind as to read the first petition into the record.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first item for tonight, item number one, is 2152-2162 Barnum Avenue and 79 Otis Street. This is the petition of Now Entity Inc. seeking a site plan review and variances of Section 7.1, .1, .12 for the minimum indoor recreation area, Section 7.4 for the minimum front and side yard setback, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, maximum building coverage, maximum impervious area, and the minimum open space requirement, Section 12.5, .1, .1, and 12.5, .7, Section 14.1 for the expansion of a non-conforming structure in order to construct a second-floor addition to create six new residences in a C.A. zone. The indicated hardship is pre-existing non-conforming lot and structure.
Thank you very much. The petitioner or their representative present?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Madam Secretary, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the learned town attorney. Hope everybody's fine this evening. When you first received this petition in the mail, or by pony, or by email from the zoning commission, I'm sure you took a look at it and said, "Wow, they are asking for a great deal of waivers for this property." The answer is yes, we are. But it's not because we want to ask for a great deal of waivers for this property in order to ultimately construct six units of apartments on a newly constructed second-floor. It's because this property is pre-existing non-conforming. I know you know what that means, but I'm going to say it anyway. It has been here for time immemorial in the stage that it's in. It was built prior to zoning. It was built close to the street. It had minimal parking in the rear. It had very minimal side yards, very minimal front yards, very minimal rear yards, very little green area, it was mostly paving, and that's the way it is today. So a number of these waivers are being requested because of the enactment of zoning regulations. However, it does not preclude this board, according to state statute, of pre-existing non-conforming conditions. And what I just stated to you are pre-existing non-conforming conditions based on the fact that this existed before zoning. I have been before the Board of Zoning Appeals, not the present members that I can recall, at least two or three times on this property. There was formerly Ray's Bar &amp; Grill. Now, Ray's Bar &amp; Grill existed for numerous years. We all used to attend it, we all used to play cards, we all used to go drinking, we all used to get in fights. We did a lot of things back in those days. But besides Ray's Bar &amp; Grill being on the property, there was a pizza joint on the corner of Barnum Avenue and Otis Street. On the opposite corner to the northeast, there was a beauty and nail salon. But over the years, those businesses have gone out. And what I did was, I came before the Board of Zoning Appeals, and we expanded Ray's Bar &amp; Grill to extend the restaurant and to extend the liquor permit. Now, when you have a liquor permit on a certain piece of property, it is designated for that certain piece of property, the confines of what that restaurant is. If you want to expand it, you have to appear before the Board of Zoning Appeals and the zoning commission in order to increase the usage and get additional approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals or the zoning commission in order to expand it. So that's what we did. In the rear of the property, and I'm sure you've been by, there was an old building back there. That building had an illegal apartment. Also, it had a storage area for Ray's Bar &amp; Grill back there. Now, what I did at one point in time is I came in and I authorized and conformed that rear property into a single-family residential apartment unit, and we received approval for it. Now I am before you guys, and I am asking you to waive a number of areas of the zoning commission, not because I want to, but because there's a necessity because it's pre-existing, as I previously stated. What we really need is a waiver of six parking spaces. Now, in order to achieve that, we have to appear before you. And if you are kind enough to give us our approval, we will then have to file an application with the zoning commission in order to have them approve the six units of apartments above the second, above the first floor. So it's actually a two-step process with the Board of Zoning Appeals and with the zoning commission. However, the newly-formed Architectural Review Committee has a say in this, and you should have seen, or you can see in your package, that we appeared before the Architectural Review Committee, and they had a number of suggestions and recommendations. We, in fact, adopted some of those recommendations, and some of those we just did not want to do it, we didn't like what they wanted us to do. We liked the plan pretty much the way we had it, and therefore, we stayed with pretty much the plan. And Mr. Brennan's comments, he was very kind, actually, but he enumerated all of the issues that are involved in this, and it's quite extensive, it's two pages. The board could inquire, and if you would like, I'll just state, there were not very many alternatives, in fact, there were no alternatives to what we were doing there or what we wanted to do there, other than the fact of not doing anything. However, the comprehensive plan of development in Stratford enumerates on that section of Barnum Avenue, from Main Street up to the Bridgeport line, that it is appropriate to have residential properties adjacent or concurrent with commercial properties. Therefore, this is a good fit by putting apartments above the restaurant. What surrounds this area are a number of two-family houses, there's a number of single-family houses, there are businesses directly located on Barnum Avenue, there are a couple of car dealerships, there are other businesses on Barnum Avenue, and we think some more residential development in this area would be good to keep people on the street, walking, walking to work, going to, walking to restaurants, it is on a bus line, so it's completely appropriate based on the request that we are making. There are no additional parking spaces that are available, other than the 12 parking spaces to the rear of the building. There is, there are no, no parking signs on Barnum Avenue. And I'm sure you've been by there, and you see people park along Barnum Avenue day and night, there's plenty of room, there's plenty of parking, there are no serious parking accidents, according to the police department, there's no serious parking jams, so we feel that our request is appropriate for this particular piece of property. Notwithstanding, having said that, I have brought with me tonight my engineer, who designed the building, designed the layout of the parking, and the architect that will come up and briefly speak about the project. If you have any questions of me now, I'm more than happy to answer them. If you want to hold your questions until the other two gentlemen get up and speak, and we can also do that, it's entirely up to you guys.
Ms. Willems?
I do have a question. If you're looking at the building straight on, there's a house to the right, 2144 it is.
Yes.
That house went into foreclosure and was up for sale over the summer. Is there any reason why that lot wouldn't have been purchased by your company for parking? Because 12 parking spots for six apartments doesn't really seem like a lot to me, and I don't have a problem with apartments, I have a problem with the parking.
That's why we're here. There is a specific reason. They want too much for the house. And it doesn't economically fit in to all of the costs associated to building the building the way we want to build it, and that's the reason we have not made an offer or purchased that property. But you are correct, it is available.
And it seems like it would be a reasonable solution to me.
It would be a reasonable solution if it were economically viable, but it's not economically viable. So we looked at it, we considered it, and dismissed it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, or will we wait for the architect and other presentation? We'll wait for the other presentation.
All right, I'd like to bring up Mr. DeAngelis right now, who is the engineer and architect on this project. Mr. DeAngelis?
That's all right. I apologize. That's okay. My name is Aris Stalas. I'm the principal of Aris Land Studio. We're actually landscape architects, so I don't want to lead you that I've done buildings. So, but I wanted to present kind of how we approach this, and quite honestly, I think it's what's been reflected in your plan of conservation and development of trying to increase the density along Barnum Avenue there. And this really is about trying to enliven the street and be more sustainable. Can we make do with what we have and not just do tear downs and try to rip everything apart? So essentially, what we have in front of us is almost what looks like kind of a building that you might see in a 1970s strip mall, which kind of, in my opinion, has kind of polluted the landscape, and we can do with fewer strip malls. And as Nick said, we have a car dealership across the street, various, you know, two-family homes along the street, and when we opened our office back in 2011, we were just down the street on Barnum Avenue, so we know this area quite well, and it really is an urban environment. We're thinking of trying to stay urban, because that really is what this environment is, is keeping the existing building and essentially building something on top of it. It's really from the innovation of the architect David Barber that we've come up with this solution. And what it does is, it really, it's smart building, in my opinion, because instead of tearing things down, bringing them to the landfill, we're able to keep the existing structure, also keep those existing businesses in place during construction, so we're not disrupting that economic activity. It may not be perfect, but they can still keep operating there. And these are just some ideas here of how it might be achieved. The plan represents really, it's cleaning up the site, and really defining edges, and saying, "This is where you can, and this is where you can't go." Providing a strong vegetative buffer on the north side of the property, as well as one on the east side of the property, so that the trash and the HVAC units are out of sight, and they're hidden from both the neighbors, as well as the occupants and neighbors who drive by the property. So the red here represents what would be an overhang here. This gray area is essentially what's been built, is proposed to be built on top of the existing building, and then this is the existing one-story facility that was turned into a one-family apartment dwelling unit. So that's, you know, in a nutshell, what we're proposing here, and again, in my opinion, it's a really sustainable solution, because we're not changing a lot, and we're bringing more people to the community, so we can see more people on the street. With that, I'll turn it over to our civil engineer, Chris DeAngelis.
Yeah, go ahead, Chris. Yeah, go ahead, I should get my stuff out here for now. Don't take too long. Sure. Good evening, my name is Chris DeAngelis, professional engineer and principal of Cadis DeAngelis. Our office is in Bridgeport. I'll just very quickly go through the site plan with you, you're probably familiar with the site. It's still Ray's Bar &amp; Grill, there's 12 parking spaces behind the site. The spaces are kind of scattered irregularly, there's no handicap or ADA space. The curb cut's very wide, it basically expands the same width of the existing parking lot, and then there's that one small residential building in the back. So again, it's a very, you know, odd lot, a lot of non-conformities, as Nick said. The idea is to work with what we have, try to improve it as much as possible. So the existing site, you can see that we narrowed down now the curb cut to 24 feet, which is standard, makes it a lot safer for people pulling in and out. We had 12 parking spaces kind of randomly thrown in the back, we have 12 proposed as well, and we do now have a handicap spot, which is required. We were also able to maintain a small buffer to the property to the north. And then, as Aris has mentioned, we've kind of come up with a way to kind of hide the HVAC mechanical equipment, and the garbage dumps are behind this little residential property that we're making. So again, it's an improvement, and we're working as best we can with what we have out there. As Aris mentioned, you know, my office and Aris's office, we share an office, we were less than, you know, half a mile away from this site, I drove by it every single day on my way to work for 10 years, until we moved our office downtown. And it's quite honestly, an area of town that needs a little bit of a facelift. The city came in a few years ago and did some streetscaping, it's very nice, and I think this would be just, you know, another addition and an improvement to the neighborhood. With that, if you'd like to know more about the building, the architect David Barber couldn't be here tonight, he teaches classes in Hartford, but Aris and Dave worked close together, and he could kind of walk you through more of the building elements. I know you're not the building board, but we thought we had these prepared for you if you wanted to see them.
So if you're interested, we can walk through the proposed building improvements for you to better understand that, if you so desire.
Please do.
Okay. So the yellow represents the existing building, and the white area represents the new addition on top of the existing building. And essentially, it's trying to bring in a more, call it colonial type of character to the structure and to the streetscape, so that along the south, the street here, you know, we're creating windows along the top floor, so that you have a very consistent, unified appearance with the fenestrations. And then the west elevation along, Oak Street, oh, not Otis, sorry, is basically kept very simple, but again, we have fenestrations for light coming into the apartments, and it's starting to give a hint of the balcony area in the back, that's along the back of the property. And when I look at this, I kind of start thinking about, it's a place that residents can be active and be sitting on, you know, during those hot summer nights, when it rains like tonight, you can still be out there. So this becomes a porch-like area, you know, and it even reminds me of New Orleans a little bit. Now, I don't know if they're going to have parades and start throwing beads, I doubt that, but it starts creating an opportunity to have a community there, so the people living there get to know each other, and it starts creating kind of a home within the community. And then the east elevation is kept very simple, which is adjacent to the neighbors. This reflects the ground floor of what will be remaining, and how that is translated into a functioning, you know, facility that can serve businesses, both that exist today and in the future. The proposed upper story reflects six new apartments, three are one-bedroom apartments, three are two-bedroom apartments, they're going to have access via stairways in these two locations, and these are exterior stairways, as well as an elevator, to make sure that it provides for ADA accessibility. And then, this still is getting worked out in terms of entryways, but this represents the covered porch area of the structure up top. And that essentially is it, and I'm sure you have questions, because we've looked at this for many, many months, and now you're seeing it kind of fresh. With that, I'll turn it over to Nick and open for any questions.
Okay, we'll open it up for questions. Do any commissioners have questions? Mr. Lewin.
Yeah, Nick, can you or --
Before, I'm sorry. Before you do that, I want to put a couple of items in the record. Now, I know with the --
Sure.
Thank you. With the application, the zoning administrator, Dan, sends around to all of the departments and requests comments, or asks them for comments, and I think they would be in your package. However, I'll submit for the record, if you don't have them, the fire department had no issues with this proposal. Obviously, we have to go before the zoning commission, and we know we have to adhere with all of the fire codes and fire laws, not only from the town, but the state of Connecticut, and I would like to submit this document into record, it's a single page. Further, I think John Casey, the town engineer's comments may be on that document. We know we have to go at some point before the sewer commission to hook up to the sanitary sewer, that's not unusual. All projects that come before the board, whether they're additions for apartments or whatever, or new construction, have to go before the sewer commission in order to achieve approval to hook up to the sanitary sewer. I believe there may be a copy of the deed in the package. I will just submit an extra copy, just in case your package did not have a deed from the zoning office. I did take a picture of the placards that are to be placed on the properties a number of days before the zoning hearing, which I did, and we took a picture on the iPhone, and we tried to transfer it to Dan's iPhone or the zoning iPhone, but I'm here to testify that they were done. Dan can testify that they were done, but they just would not appear on his computer. If you want to check with him, you can check with him. Last but not least on this, what is legally required, as you well know, to determine if there's a hardship? Variances of the zoning regulations may be granted only in harmony with their general purpose and intent, and with due consideration for conserving the public health, safety, convenience, welfare, property values solely with respect to the parcel of land where owning is a condition especially affecting such parcel, but not affecting generally the district in which it is situated. Simply put, this is pre-existing non-conforming, there is nothing like it on the strip, except this, so it is different, it is pre-existing, and I believe you are allowed under the law to approve our petition. And with the little, excuse me, literal enforcement of the new zoning regulations, really, and ordinances, really deters us from using the full value and improving this property and putting something on there that's going to be an asset, not only to that area, but also to the town of Stratford. You must find this if you approve it, and we hope you will approve it. I have with me, well, you can get to the questions, and then I'll bring up another speaker.
Questions, Mr. Lewin.
Yeah. Mr. Lewin, can you and someone, or someone on your team, kind of explain some of the items from the Architectural Review Board that were modified to comply with their recommendations?
Some of the elements, for example, wanted to tweak the lighting a little bit, modify the lighting on the, that's illuminating the back from the elevator, and then adding accent lights along the front of the property. The question about the siding, so that's still an ongoing, I'm not sure if, in terms of the type of siding, has been decided yet, but that's something that's still being reviewed by the applicant, as well as the architect, to see how, what specific siding they're going to come up with. And that really, those are the three things, had to do with the siding on the upper story, and then lighting around the building.
All right, so just to clarify, the Architectural Review Board items are more what you're going to kind of cover when you go to zoning, as opposed to being specific to needing the variances?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other commissioners with questions? Ms. Doolin.
Chris Doolin, I have a question. The existing single-family structure is staying?
Correct.
And how many parking spaces do they have?
They actually, they actually park in conjunction with the total of number of parking spaces that are there, which are 12. They're not numbered. Now, one of the recommendations was that we number the parking spaces, which is really not a big deal. That's something we can do, to designate which parking spaces are for the business and which parking spaces would be for the apartments above.
Because all these spaces, they're for the restaurant as well, whether it's open now or not.
That's correct.
Okay, I mean, I am very impressed with the architectural design of the building. My issue, quite honestly, is the parking.
That's really the nuts and bolts of the whole petition. All of the other requests for variances are there, because it's pre-existing non-conforming. You really need to hone in on the parking, and, you know, the fact of the matter is, we have what we have, we have no more, we have the 12. And they seem to be sufficient, more than sufficient at this point.
So, speaking about the parking, what about the street parking? How can they control the street parking as far as the business? And would there be a handicap on the street for that business? Because there's only one in the back.
I'm not sure I understand what you mean by controlling the street parking. It's there to be used in common with everybody in that building?
Right.
Or people that have two-family houses or single-family houses?
Right.
As far as handicap parking, we have included a handy pack.
There's just one, though.
Yeah, one was required, and we used one handicap parking space behind the building.
Right, there's only one, so could there be one on the street, too? Like, or would we address that out? We just weren't doing one handicap.
I think that, that's a good question. I think that would have to be, that would have to be asked of the police department.
Yeah.
That would be something that we could do, and we cannot dictate to them.
Right.
It would go by way of letter to see if it was required, and if it was required, we would certainly pay whatever the fee was to install the sign.
Yeah, I could just envision that parking and traffic could be a problem eventually, you know what I mean? So I just...
Well, I look at, I understand what you're saying. I look at it a little bit differently. Those properties obviously have been there for time immemorial.
Yeah.
Is Barnum Avenue a busy street? Yeah, it is. I have asked the police department if there have been a number of accidents within that vicinity, and they said, "No, there haven't." Now, down on the corner of Bruce Avenue and Barnum Avenue, which is, you know, a number of, two blocks away, three, there's always accidents and intersections, not only that one, but other intersections in town.
Right, I don't think six apartments are going to make a big difference. They have more apartments and living, you know, residents down that way.
Yes.
So it's a little hectic.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Go ahead.
So, I mentioned that house that sold, or is on the market, foreclosed, and that was something you looked at. Did you look at any other alternatives as far as parking? Because I think this is great, I just think the parking is going to be an issue, I just do.
Well, the parking is the issue, and as I indicated, that's why we're here, for the waiver, literally for the waiver of the parking, other than the other issues that arose because of the non-conforming situation here. We did not look at other areas, we did look at that house because it was adjacent, and that's all we really looked at. We didn't figure there were any other alternatives, to be quite frank.
And do you have the receipts of the notices to neighbors?
I sent them in.
Do we have those?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
You know, it is a really great --
I'm sorry?
It is a great vision, and we do need more apartments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, Ms. Gibson, I believe we still have the Traffic Authority Commission in town, don't we, Dan? At the police department? There is, there is an authority within the town that takes up issues such as handicap parking on a public street. It would also have to be in conjunction, I believe that's still a state -- It would also have to be in conjunction, I believe that's still a state road, so that would have to be in conjunction with state jurisdiction. So it's not, nothing that the developer unfortunately is able to do.
I will, I will, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
I will say to you, you good people, whatever questions you might have in your mind now that you haven't asked, I would hope that you ask them now, because once we close this public hearing, as you well know, if a question arises and some commissioner, for whatever reason, goes out on a misconception, I can't stand up and holler and scream, even though I have in the past, and I've been told to sit down and shut up. So if there's anything that you think you might want to ask, no matter how mundane it will be, that's why we're here. I'm happy to answer them. Except for the town attorney, I don't want to talk to him.
So I have a question. The downstairs, right now, it's currently unoccupied commercial building?
I'm sorry, sir?
The, the downstairs?
No, it is occupied, and I have, I have the tenant here who would like to come up at some point and speak in favor of the petition.
Certainly, he'll be allowed to do so. Is there any, is there any plans to do any type of remodeling or anything downstairs? Petition it off? It stays the way it is, correct?
It stays the way it is, sir, yes.
Thank you. Any other kind of questions from the commissioners or the petitioner?
Can I just have one more question?
Go ahead.
What is the occupancy downstairs in the restaurant? What's the occupancy there?
Come on up. Your question is, what's your, what's your occupancy in the restaurant? State your name for the.
Oh, my name is Jimmy Tucker, owner of Mango's Bar. My occupancy is, I think, 115 standing and 62 seating. I think some, somewhere around that.
So the 62, the fire marshal basically said you're going to have 62 seats and 115 people standing?
Yep.
Okay, for occupancy.
And that's approximately the number that Ray's Bar and Grill used to have, and there were, there were really no issues with parking then, and we don't anticipate any issues now.
Commissioner Doolin, did you have a question?
One just went on ahead, was about the existing restaurant. What hours are in operation for the restaurant?
Four, four till 11:00. And on weeknights, sometimes we go legal state hours, like maybe 1:30.
Okay, so you don't open until four in the afternoon?
Yeah, four in the evening, yep.
Every day? All right.
Most of my, we mostly do takeouts too, so people just come in and take food and let's go.
So those parking spaces in the rear are for the restaurant as well?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I know where this location is. I've been to Ray's.
You should, you should come to Mango's. I mean, we're open.
I was shocked, like, I drove by, I yelled.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have food in here.
Just parking is a nightmare all over. I mean, the side streets are all completely full, and that is my only problem. I love, as I said before, the proposed structure looks great. I just have to weigh it out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Question. Not that I would ask you to be familiar with all the businesses, but for example, other restaurants that are located in that area that do not have street parking, they also have to go services as well. What comes to mind is Salerno's. You know of no parking issues that they're currently having, and, and they do not have any parking off-site, so to speak, off the public street.
I am, I am aware of them. There are a couple of others that I just can't name off the top of my head right now, where there is very little parking on the property itself. They park on the street and there's, there's very little issues with parking, even though it's Barnum Avenue.
So in essence, this current restaurant, as it is right now, with the parking that's in the back, you would say it's consistent with the others along Barnum Avenue?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Any other questions from any commissioners? All right, thank you very much.
Nobody else?
Nobody else?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Please come forward. In favor? Okay. We're going to get to that right in a second. First, I have to ask if there's anybody in favor? Anybody in favor? Hearing none. Those that are against, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Bud Hyman. I live at 2155 Barnum, directly across the street from Mango's Bar and Grill, whatever. I lived there for 12 years. And since Mango's Bar came into play, the parking there is off the charts. A couple of comments were peripherally made that the parking is not an issue, it's not a problem. That is an absolute falsehood. Most nights of the week, Mango's Bar during the week, it's only be able to 1:00. Weekend, it's 2:00. The streets are lined with cars. I live in a three-family house. There are two houses adjacent to me. There are houses across the street. People in my building, there's two other units in my house. Just so we're clear, it's an old house, 1900 it was built. So it's a three, was made into a three-family house. People come home after 9:00 at night. They have to park on Mars. They do. So any inference that there's no issue with parking is a factual falsehood. I'll just comment briefly. Mango's Bar is loud, their patrons are loud, their music is loud. I've called the police many times. I don't know if it's this gentleman or not. We had a couple of civil conversations until it became uncivil by him. You may not, you should know, six months ago, there was a shooting there, one person died. Now, is it on him, on the owner? Of course not. But if he wasn't there, it wouldn't have happened. The zoning board made, in my opinion, a poor decision in letting this place be there. Gentleman came up here and said, well, this area is basically urban. That is also false. This is a residential community. I'm originally from New York. Manhattan is urban, Chicago is urban, New Haven is urban. This part of Stratford is not urban. There's no other housing like this on top of each other. There are multifamily houses like mine, but it is not an urban area. I'm woken up constantly by the patrons leaving, yelling and screaming. My point being, and this is not about Mango's Bar, honestly, is the density is going to go up here markedly. One of these, one of these people mentioned that there is an issue with housing in this state. Absolutely. I was on a, I was on a conference call with Representative DeLorio one night that was talked about that, because it influences a lot of people, especially seniors such as myself. I recognize that, but doesn't change the facts of the situation, is that the parking doesn't even start to, can be addressed. There are 12 parking spots in the back. Maybe they cover the units that they proposed to put up. But the parking on the street every single night, almost every single night, except when the bar's not, the dance club, it's not really a bar, it's a dance club. Someone talked about Jimmy's. I was here for Jimmy's. There's no comparative. There was no issue with Jimmy's. They had motorcycles there and the streets were not full up, and the patrons came and left. They had Harleys, they made a little noise, but they came and they left. They went in, they went out, they didn't hang out on the street. So what you're doing here is you're creating, increasing the density of this residential community, and I emphasize, it's a residential community. Now, if you're into the urbanization of America, yeah, then you approve this. This doesn't belong here. You have nothing like it nearby. It's a bad idea. And again, the emphasis seems to be the parking here. Parking is, is off the charts. So anybody who says the parking's not affected, it was same with Jimmy's, that is a false statement, because I've been here for a dozen years. I hope you will look at this perspective and not just the idea of a tax base and the need for increased housing, which I do appreciate. It's the wrong place for this. Just like, honestly, it's the wrong place for a nightclub. This is a residential community, and the side streets, I talk to the people all around. On Otis and across the street, you know, I walk around, talk to all of them. They're all really unhappy with what's going on now, let alone adding to it. So I ask you to consider this. It's not a good idea for this community. And if you don't think it'll, it'll bring down the housing values, think again. Something that I have a little expertise on from my career. Housing values will come down with the density here, because people will come by, they'll see what's going on. I don't want to live here. So I hope you will not approve this, and keep in mind what I've said. The parking, and that seems to be the focus here, doesn't even start to cover it. The cars go all the way up that street in, in front of the, the used car lot, which is right next door to me. Up and down the street, and we come home at night and we've got to park like a block away or two blocks away? That's not really fair, is it? And you're going to put residential housing on top of this, of the strip, mini strip mall, as I call it? Anybody have any questions for me?
No. Thank you very much for your comments, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, folks. My name is Diane Hints, and I live at 202 P Street, which is about a block and a half south of this project. And I guess I'm opposed to it, although, as you have said, and I, I was in the planning and zoning office this morning or this afternoon, and I did look at the plans. And yes, the project does look rather nice, and I am glad to see that there's going to be six apartments there. But I have problems or I have concerns that I want to bring to you. First of all, I think the limitation of the green space. Now, in looking at those, the plans that were in the planning and zoning office, which I guess are these here, there's a limitation of the green space. It's like maybe 9% or 12% or something like that. And I just think we need more green space to an apartment. Especially now with the pandemic, we've learned we need some outdoor space for our mental and our physical health. And the amount of green space that's going to be linked to this project is not adequate for the six apartments. Is it six or eight now? I forget. Six apartments. It's just not adequate. Maybe the planning and zoning guidelines, I mean, maybe it's, it's in regulation, but maybe the planning and zoning guidelines need to be updated since we've come through the pandemic and what we've learned, how a situation of limiting us to the outdoors affects our mental health. So I mean, you know, that's not your call, but I mean, that's just something to think of for the future, that maybe the, the guidelines of the percentage should be changed. Secondly, I want to mention the, the water runoff. In the back, on Otis Street, I mean, like I said, I, I live in the neighborhood, so I walk from, I walk around the neighborhood. I walk to Citgo, I get my Lotto ticket, I walk over to my mechanic on Otto Town over there, Otto Town Bill. So I'm familiar with it. As I walk down Otis Street there, the back of it is all blacktop. There's no place for the water to be, to be absorbed into any green space. Again, I go back to that green space, that there's no place, it's all blacktop. So what's going to happen to that water? It's going to come out on Barnum Avenue, and it's going to come down the street, past Regency Terrace, past Aggressive Terrace, past Bruce Avenue, go down to West Avenue. As I know, I have a friend who lives on West Avenue, and I guess they have a perpetual problem with the flooding down there, because they're all downhill from all the streets, whether it be P Street or Graham Street or Thompson Street or, or whatever street it is, Hollis Street, they all go down into West Avenue. So all that water's going to run down there, because there's no place for it to go. I mean, you, that's, the rain is going on the, the street, which is nothing you can do about. But what's coming off of this project, you can. So that's one area that I want to talk about. Also to the parking, as he says, there's 12 parking spaces behind the building. Yes, that's true, but there's that two, there's that house there, that cement house, which has two bedrooms to it. So technically, you could have a husband and wife in there with two, two cars, which would be designated to them. So if you've got 12 spaces, now you're down to 10, which are going to the six units upstairs, which is three bedrooms, three two-bedrooms and three one-bedrooms. So you've got six or eight or nine vehicles there. You just don't have the adequate parking. Maybe if they got rid of that 79 Otis Street building, just got rid of it totally, out of the project, and use that for additional parking, it would support the six units above and the restaurant below. As you said, pointed out that house in foreclosure, which is on the right side. Well, if you go on the other side of Otis Street on Barnum Avenue, that building there, I don't know the number, is a little bit sad, very sad, the two of them. And then the two single-family houses on the other side of that are even sadder, and I think now they're totally empty. And then you've got that, the pizza place there, it used to be the Italian store for ages. You've got his parking lot that is available. In the letter that I have, which was written, or the letter or whatever this thing, a review written by Dan Brennan, which I presume is you, okay? To me, it kind of reads like you allude on the second page that maybe they could secure parking for their employees and for customers at some other place, which a possibility would be the, the old funeral parlor, which is now a daycare center. On Otis Street, I believe they have, if you go down Otis Street, the, behind these, these three, two or three-family houses, there's a, a parking lot that used to belong to the funeral parlor. They could secure rights to their, or rent, and use that for their employees and use that for their customers. They might be able to also go down Bruce, Boston Avenue or Barnum Avenue and use that Italian pizza place now, and use that place for some parking of their customers and their employees, and leave the 12 parking spots, or maybe two or three more, if we got rid of those two, that house back there, for the apartments upstairs. I mean, it's like, where are all these, you know, cars going to park? They're going to park on Boston Avenue there? What about in a winter storm? When we have, you know, the police coming down the street, they come down P Street, P Street occasionally, and they're on their megaphone and they're saying, get your cars off the street, we're coming by with a snowplow. So I can pull my car into my driveway, and my friend's car can go into my driveway too. Where are these people that are in this, these apartments, where are they going to put their cars to get them off the street? And Boston Avenue is, Barnum Avenue is a main street. Is that a state road or is it a, a state road? So you've got the big trucks coming down, they're not going to come through with a, with a bullhorn, like the Stratford Police Department do and say, get your car off the street. So in a snowstorm, where are these cars going to go? Where are the homeowners or the apartment owners, where are they going to park? Let's see. And I guess that's it. As I said, basically, my issue is, I like the idea of apartments there. The bar, so-so. I have not been in it, but that doesn't, you know, go either way. I like the apartments, but I just think these guys have to make more adequate parking for the units upstairs, as well as their customers, that they want to come into the bar. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak against this petition in opposition? In opposition? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, before you do rebuttal, please.
Certainly, Mr. Doolin.
Thank you. By way of, by way of gentle rebuttal, I do understand that gentleman, I'm sorry. I do understand the gentleman's concerns. However, he referenced it as a mini mall. This is not a mini mall. This is a restaurant bar that has been there for time immemorial. All we are proposing is six residential units. The gentleman indicated that this is mostly a residential neighborhood. It is. And I referenced in my presentation in chief that there are single-family, two-family homes, multifamily homes in the area. That's true. There is some off-street parking to those residents, and there is some on-street parking with those residents. This proposal is no difference, is no different. In fact, he's concerned about the noise. He has approached the, the tenant, and they've had some discussions, some favorable, some not so favorable. But I would think that the restaurant owner, once there were apartments there, would keep the noise down a little bit further, if in fact, there's a great deal of noise. His hours aren't egregious. He's indicated what his hours are. We're talking about residential apartments. This is not a high-intense use of this property. It's part of the comprehensive plan of development to have more residential properties on this, in this area. We think this is an appropriate site. With respect to the young lady that came up and wanted more green area, what she may have missed in my presentation in chief is, the building is the building. The building can't move. We are not going to tear down the rear building or any part of this building to create more green space. There is a little bit of green space. There is a little bit of green space. That will be maintained. It won't be removed. The main issue is, we have twelve parking spaces. That's what we have. We feel that this is a good adjunct to the restaurant downstairs, and I would hope that you would see it our way. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Doolin.
I just want to make a comment. Okay, so, I just want to say that I do think this is a great project. I'm familiar with the area because I live in the area, and I do walk the area as well. And I have heard a lot more gunfire and things like that, but that's not the issue today. It is also a bus route, so who knows who's going to live in the six apartments. I just wanted to let them know that I heard what they were saying, because I am also a resident in the community, but I do think it's a great project. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask you why you think it's a great project? You said that several times. Why is it a great project?
I will tell you. I will tell you. Because there is a huge housing deficit in the state and in the city, this town. And also because it's the size of the apartments and the location of it. It's on a bus route. It could help some people.
Commissioner Gibson, we're going to stop this right here. We're not here to get into a debate.
Yeah, that's the reason. Thank you.
We've had our question-and-answer period, that's part of the public hearing. You can make any comments that you, that you feel are pertinent to this in the administrative session. So, if there's, we've already gone through the process, I'll make a, take a motion to close the public hearing. Okay?
I'd like to make, I'm not sure where this should be taken up, but I think there should be more, look, I think they should look into more ways to figure out how to do parking, and therefore, I don't know if that means you leave the public hearing open so we can let, give them the opportunity to find something else. I don't think that adding two parking spaces, when you're adding six apartments, you know, to an area that is already parking-challenged, is the right thing for us to do. And I would like to give them the opportunity to find some other alternative for parking. I mean, they're just adamant that they're not going to do it, but that house was in foreclosure, I can't imagine it being that outrageous. So...
You want to put that in the form of a motion?
I'd like, I'd like to table this, um...
Table the public hearing.
The public hearing for this item number one on the agenda tonight.
Hey, we have a motion to table, do I hear a second?
I second it.
A motion and a second discussion on the motion. I'd love to weigh in on this. The simple reality is, is I don't think that we're in a position where we should be asking any developers to purchase additional parcels of land regardless, whether it's in foreclosure or not, regardless. We are not here, at least my personal opinion is, we're not here to determine the economic viability. If the applicant does not so choose, or is not in the financial position to acquire additional land, there's nothing that we can do to mandate that. And if we feel that it's, you know, not an appropriate project, then during our administrative session, we can make a motion to deny based upon that. But to keep the public hearing open for the purpose of additional testimony regarding parking, I mean, the applicants basically said they've looked at everything, and there's nothing that they're going to be able to do. So, I think we're just delaying the process thirty days, but I'll defer to the majority of the commission. Mr. Doolin.
So, one comment that I would like to just say is, I think we should also be mindful that this application has to go through zoning. And so, I don't want us to stray into what might be considered the work of another body. I, I think it's, it's, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Town Attorney, but I think it's our job to solely kind of focus in on, on just the variances that are at hand, and then there's other work to be done by the zoning commission.
Sure. Obviously, statutorily, you guys are supposed to focus on whether or not they're entitled to their, to their variance. However, you guys can attach reasonable conditions to the granting of a variance, you know, to, to control for such things as health, safety, property values, that sort of thing. That's within your, that's within your power.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you both.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. The ayes have it. The petition is tabled, the public hearing will remain open for, until our next public hearing, which is on October. What is that date, Dan? Do you have that off the top of your head? October fourth, so it will be on the agenda on October fourth to take more testimony regarding this. Next item on the agenda. Ms. Withham would be so kind as to read, petition of Q. 119 Swanson Avenue.
I'd like to read into the record, 119 Swanson Avenue, petition of Ashu Bahati, seeking a site plan review and variances section four point two to waive the maximum building coverage from the required twenty-five percent to thirty-three point four percent, and waive the rear yard setback from the required twenty-five feet to twenty-three point seven feet for a proposed rear two-story addition and deck incidental to a single-family dwelling in our, in an RS four zone, the hardship being pre-existing, undersized, non-conforming lots.
The applicant or the petition, or the, excuse me, the petitioner or their representative, sir?
Good evening. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Ashu Bahati. I am the petitioner, and I'm also the owner of the property. I've been living there since two thousand and six. When the place was built, I lived there with myself and my wife and son. And over a period of time, our, we all have grown and needs have increased, so we like to add, you know, some addition to the back of the house, to make some living space in a bedroom. That's the intent of this addition. And there are two non-confirmances over here. One is the size of the building is, is more than what's permissible, and so that's one. And the second one is, the deck extends further back by a feet and a few, few more inches. That's the second non-confirmances. And since the whole property is non-conforming, pre-existing, it's, the size is smaller than what normal lots are in that area, and the width of the property is also smaller than what the size typically is in that area. Those are the two existing, you know, non-confirmances of the property. I seek your approval in, in, you know, giving, granting me the variance for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do have a question. There is a, you got a comment from the town engineer regarding runoff, or increase of impervious area, which will create some additional rainfall issues. Have you had an opportunity to review the town engineer's comments?
No, I didn't get a chance to review that.
Okay. Dan, can we provide him with a copy? Do we have an additional copy we can give to him so he can have an opportunity to review I mean, if not, I'd be more than happy to give him mine. Please pass that to the petitioner. Oh, okay, I'll just take that then. So, to paraphrase what the town engineer is saying, is that because we're going to have more building structure, that it's going to eliminate the natural environment that would absorb rainfall of an inch. So, permanent storage of one inch of rainfall, rainfall volume over the area should be provided to ensure there's no increase, and here we go into acronisms, which I'm not up on anymore, but DIC, which I assume is runoff, as per the MS four permit goal to reduce the overall amount of runoff within the town. So, in other words, you haven't looked into any onsite water storage facility, like building a, a holding tank?
Not yet, but, yeah, I would have to check with my architect about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Break it. Dan, go ahead.
So, John Casey's remarks would typically also be covered through the building permit process. The applications typically, when they get submitted, will flare out to all departments required to review, and one of engineering's requirements will be sure to make, make sure he meets the MS four requirements.
So, in other words, there's nothing, nothing in that memo that would preclude us from granting the petition at this time if that was our desire to do so?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Ms. Doolin.
Have you considered alternatives to making the deck smaller so that you would, would be in compliance with the rear setback?
Sure, I can do that. It's like I have an existing deck. I was thinking of just moving it in the back, but I can make it smaller so that it, it can be conforming, yeah?
Will you?
Yeah, yes. I'll ask the carpenter to chop it off, yeah.
Has there been any comment from any neighbors?
No, like I've talked to my neighbor, they're cool with it, yeah.
Dan, we have copies of the notices?
Yes, we do have copies of the mail.
All right, so they've been noticed, they have, they've submitted no comments. They may be here tonight, but I'm not sure. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close or table. Oh, my apologies. Thank you very much, sir. I have to go through the other process of in favor and opposed. There are no questions at this time. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you so much for your time. Have a nice evening. Thank you.
Is there any, anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? Anyone opposed to this petition? Anyone opposed to 119 Swanson? Hearing done now, the chair will entertain a motion to either table or adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to conclude the public hearing on item number two.
We have a motion, do I hear a second? Second by Ms. Doolin. Discussion on the motion? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Gibson, third petition, 15 Third Avenue.
Okay. 15 Third Avenue, petition of Jake Amoroso and Angela Kelly, seeking a site plan review and variance of section four, one, six, fourteen, C one, to allow an accessory-in-law apartment within existing single-family dwelling in the RS zone, RS four zone. Hardship is a regular-shaped lot, variances previously approved in nineteen seventy-five and in nineteen ninety-four.
Petitioner or their representative present. Ms. Proto.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Cilio. Commissioners, for the record, my name is Benjamin Proto. I'm an attorney with an office at twenty-eight eighty-five Main Street here in Stratford. I represent Jake Amoroso and Angela Kelly. Mr. Amoroso and Ms. Kelly are currently on their honeymoon, so they are married and joint owners of the property. This property, what we're seeking is a variance of the provision within the accessory apartment regulation that requires conformance with the setback requirements. This property is an interesting property, and this problem is an interesting problem. In the mid nineteen seventies, approximately nineteen seventy-seven, a number of variances were granted to approve the construction of the main house, most notably lot coverage, and I believe a wetland setback. And the house was constructed in the mid nineteen seventies. Take my word for this, it has not moved. At that time, the, this board granted variances, and at that time, much like today, surveys were required to apply for variances and for building permits. No setback variance was needed in nineteen seventy-seven, and again, take my word for it, the setback requirements have not changed since nineteen seventy-seven. In nineteen ninety-four, the then owners of the property came to decide to build what, at that time, we thought was an accessory apartment, but, take my word for it, we didn't have accessory apartments in nineteen ninety-four, they came in a little bit later in the nineties. So, it was not an accessory apartment, it became an addition to the main house. Variances were required to build this addition. Take my word for it, the addition has not moved since nineteen ninety-four, when it was built. No setback require, variance was required because it met all the setbacks. The setbacks have not changed since nineteen ninety-four. The then owner of the property decided upon to sell the property recently, and the property was advertised with an in-law apartment, and there was a reason it was advertised with an in-law apartment. It was advertised with an in-law apartment because the tax assessor has it listed as an in-law apartment, and the WPCA has two sewer connections and two sewer bills at the location, one for the main house and one for the in-law apartment. Lo and behold, somehow or another, it no longer meets the setback requirements for a front setback of ten feet at nine and a half feet, and for a rear setback at twenty-five feet, which is now twenty-four point seven feet. My only explanation I can give you as to why these setbacks may no longer conform are the two major hurricanes that occurred, which may have removed property someplace. A half a foot here, a third of a foot there, as both Sandy and Irene wrecked, as we all know, severe damage and havoc in that end of town. There is no construction being done, nothing is being built, there is no more building being put up, the buildings haven't moved, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming use, but in order to have it made into a legal accessory apartment, it either must comply with, I believe it's four point one point sixteen, or we need a waiver of that for that half foot in the front and that third of a foot in the rear that we've asked for. The, the current owners of Jake and Angela, Angela's parents will be, assuming it is approved, will be living there, they are blood relatives, and obviously meet the provisions of the regulation for accessory apartment tenant. And once the, the board hopefully approves this variance, at the end of the month, the zoning commission and its administrative session will deal with the approval of the accessory apartment. So, that's kind of our story, that we have a building that's been in the same location for close to forty-some-odd years, forty-five years, a second addition to the building that's been in place for over thirty years. I promise you, it hasn't moved. We haven't moved it at all, half-foot either way, but somehow or another, we lost a half-foot in the front, and we lost a third of a foot in the back. And so, we're asking for a waiver of the provision that requires us to comply with the setback requirements for that district, which is ten feet in the front, it's at nine and a half feet, twenty-five feet in the rear, it's twenty-four point seven feet. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions that any of the commissioners may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions from commissioners?
I just have one question, it's more of an interest question. Did the sale to your clients was allowed to happen even though the property was not in conformance with the zoning regulations, and that's why?
Wasn't being utilized as an accessory apartment.
Okay, so that's...
Right. They want to, it had, it had been utilized.
But now that use is being made official by going through this process.
Right, right, exactly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Proto.
Ms. Doolin?
I just want to go on record saying that I do know the petitioners, that's all, and I can make a judgment unbiased.
Okay, you're not an, you're not an adjacent property owner, correct? Okay, thank you. Ms. Withham?
I want to go on record that I know the, the person who sold the house, because I own the, two houses across the street, and the house has not moved. It's not moved.
Okay. So, you, you two are not on a direct adjacent property owner, so you don't have a...
No, there is one thing, though, I would like to mention for the record, just to cover ourselves, is that the notice to Beach Drive Condominium Association, which I was a part of until July eighth of this summer, when I sold my lot, was addressed to the wrong property manager.
It was addressed to the record owner.
I, I understand that, but...
So, if you're, if the property management company has not changed its notice requirements or who notices are to be sent to, the only record we have is what the assessor has for ownership and the GIS system has for ownership, and that's where it was sent.
And I do understand that, but I've had some issues myself with the property that I've owned that hasn't been recorded quickly enough by the town, so I just want to put it on record. I understand that you sent it to the prior property manager, who's not been that for almost six months, so, I just...
I don't know if they've notified the town or not, and that's?
Yeah. No, I just want to have it on record so that it's there. But no issue, the house has not moved.
Thank you very much. Is there any comments from the commissioners? Questions? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Proto.
Thank you, Mr. Forster.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the petition? In favor of the petition, 15 Third Avenue? Anyone to speak in opposition of the petition? Opposition? Hearing done. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to close item three?
I have a motion to close. Do I see a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Witham? Discussion on the motion? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Ms. Doolin, petition number five, again, once again for the record, petition number four, which is 7050 Main Street, the petitioner has pulled that. So we don't need to, we're not required to take any action on it at this time. So petition number five, 1110 Chapel Street, please.
1110 Chapel Street, petition of Red Buff Rita, Inc., appealing cease and desist order issued by the zoning enforcement officer.
Petitioner or their representative present, please.
Yes, good evening. I'm Attorney Stephen Ballas at the Pellegrino Law Firm, and I represent Red Buff Rita, which is the owner of the property. I have some documents that I can provide your board with. One is the notice of the appeal that I did for the reason that there is a pending lawsuit. I have the letter I sent to the neighbors with the agenda and the certified mailing. And then the last document I have is the actual complaint that I'll discuss in a second. May I hand that in?
Certainly.
So let me start by saying that this is not a variance, not seeking a variance. We are, we were issued, my client was issued a cease and desist from Dan for being in violation of a couple of the sections of the zoning regulations, namely 4.2. So I just wanted to tell you real quick, and it's pretty easy and straightforward. Back in, uh, let me get the right year, I think it was 2021. My client had gotten a permit for a deck, and there was a variance from 12 feet to 6 feet as the setback, and there was a variance from 29 to 28.3 feet for the total coverage. What happened then was it was constructed, and apparently one of the little corners of the landing of the deck, instead of being 6 feet, is 5.6, 5 feet 6 inches, so it's off by about, what, 6 inches? Yeah. And as far as the zone for the coverage, we're at, instead of 28.3, we're at, that was what was allowed by variance, I think we're at 29. So these are very, very, very minor amounts that were off from the regulation. But, and this is the big but, there's a pending lawsuit with one of the neighbors for adverse possession. So there's a strip of land between these two homeowners that, I think it's about 114 feet, that is being contested. So I don't know who's going to win, right? I'm not the judge. If the landowner, Red Buff Rita, wins, then there's no .6 inches or half a foot discrepancy any longer, so that goes away. And if the 114 feet is awarded to Red Buff Rita, the coverage area would obviously, that issue would go away as well. On the other hand, if they lose the case, Red Buff Rita, right, you're only going to win or lose. I don't think there's anything in between. I guess you could settle, but then there would be these violations. And I understand that. So my point for coming here today is simply to say it's just not timely to issue the cease and desist letter at this time. Let the court decide. If the court decides favorably for Red Buff Rita, then I think Dan and I would agree that there is no violation. If Red Buff Rita loses, then we'll have to deal with, you know, deal with it, because there would be a violation. So I'm asking you here, and I gave you the complaint, that was one of the documents, the lawsuit. Let the court decide. I don't know, I'll come back in six months or whatever it may be and let you know who won, and hopefully we can have it resolved one way or the other before then as well. So the reason I had to file this appeal was because in a cease and desist order, there's a fine of, at least it says in here, there's a fine of $100 per day. And I don't want that to accrue, is the right word maybe? My client doesn't want to pay that because at this point, we don't know if there's a violation or if there's not. So that's why we brought, I had to bring the appeal. That's really all I have to say. I've spoken to Dan, I think he knows my position. I've spoken to Alex. So now I'm speaking to you.
All right, thank you. Questions from the commissioners? Ms. Witham?
So the lawsuit, when did that commence? After the cease and desist?
No, I think it was before. Hold on, I have a copy here. I was not the lawyer on the lawsuit at the time. Oh, here it is. August 24th, 2021. And the cease and desist by Dan, I think it was just a, you know, maybe a month ago, Dan?
Because, as you know, things can get held up in the courts for months and years and years.
Yeah, you're right about that.
And, so you're asking us to say, okay, go ahead and continue building?
So the cease and desist was dated July 15th, 2022, a year later. So the lawsuit was a year earlier. 11 months, to be exact, yeah, about a year earlier.
But you would agree that a lawsuit like this could go on for a very long time?
I guess, yeah, I guess, the only thing I can tell you, yeah, I don't know your definition of a very long time. I'm not trying to be cute, yeah, the court system's not fast, I agree with you. The only good news is adverse possession is heard by a judge, not a jury.
And is there any reason when the cease and desist came to your client, why they didn't just go for a variance?
Why they didn't what?
Go for like a variance and? I mean, that seems like it would be the easiest fix and not?
Well, to be quite honest, I did present one before your commission, and then I withdrew it because I wasn't aware of the lawsuit. And I said, you know what? Since there's a lawsuit, it may just go away, you know? If he wins the lawsuit, there's no hardship, he'll have won. I know. I know.
I struggle with that.
I pulled it back and said, you know, they're going to say to me, Steve, you got a lawsuit, what if you win? I was kind of like, yeah, I was thinking like you. I did bring it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that's all I have to say. I hope you will just, as again, I'm not asking you to rule on it, I'm just asking you to suspend the decision on it and so that I don't have to pay the $100 for being, quote, in violation.
Any other questions?
Is it within our rights and duties as a body to have the fines be suspended pending the lawsuit?
I'll defer that to the town attorney who represents us.
That is a good question. I had not thought of that. So this is an appeal of Dan's order. Statutorily, you guys have to uphold, reverse, or modify his order. I don't know, as I sit here, whether you can, your question is whether you can suspend the implementation of those fines until this lawsuit is resolved?
Yeah.
That would be correct. And then my other kind of question, which might be better held until later, is was there a prior approval of this work to start? I'm trying to, now that the piece of the lawsuit's been added in, I'm trying to get like a clear chronology of what happened, what document was presented, when, what's kind of like the workflow from before we got here tonight?
I think, and Dan probably can comment on this better than I can, but I believe that the property owner received an initial certificate of zoning compliance. But I think that was based on some sort of inaccurate survey that showed that they were, the setbacks complied. Dan?
Yeah, that's correct. So I believe a permit was initially approved by our zoning office around a little before April 15th of 2021. That permit had been stopped after the office had noticed work being done that was not on the survey that was provided in the permit. At this point, the building department had not reviewed or issued a building permit for any of the work. So that was initially stopped. Later on, another building permit was issued or submitted by the applicant, which was denied, denied by myself. From the denial of that permit, I believe Mr. Ballas filed an appeal for me denying the permit, which was eventually withdrawn. Since then, I believe a portion of the staircase had been removed, and that had basically been it. I thought we were on our way to compliance. I also had a meeting with the applicant's architect, Joe Mingalelio, who presented a plan to me which showed compliance of the full property. The deck was going to be removed, the staircase was going to be removed, an interior accessway was going to be created. We had discussed it, we both agreed it complied. About a week after meeting with him, I reached out to him to see if there was a timeline for him to issue a permit. And at that point, he had told me that he was told to stand down for now. And soon after, we received the appeal from Mr. Ballas. And that's where we are now.
All right, thank you for that. Just professionally, I work for an engineering firm, and so like, I'm very familiar with the design process and going to permit drawings and the whole workflow. And for some reason, the, just the chronology of this and what happened when was not really making sense to me, so, thank you.
Thank you. So the question, I'll pose it to you, Mr. Brennan. The structure, the additional deck, does it currently exist today or not?
Yes, it does.
So it was built?
It was built.
There have been things done to change what was originally built, such as you indicated something about a removal of the staircase?
Yes, along, so I don't know if you have any drawings in front of you?
I do.
If you're looking from the front of the house, there was a staircase that came down to the ground level. So you could walk right up it. That staircase has since been removed. The second floor entry and platform coming out the side door still exists. The staircase going up to the back roof deck still exists. And the overhang of the rooftop deck, which contributes to the overall lot coverage, still exists.
So as I understand the chronology here, a permit was issued based upon the site plans that were submitted. However, the site plans that were submitted don't correspond with what was constructed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And additional construction took place after or during the time that no building permit was in place?
Correct. None of the existing work has been inspected by the building department at all.
But did it have a, did they have a permit to do the quote-unquote "existing" work? Did they have a permit to do anything after the time that permit number 50789 was withdrawn?
No, a building permit was never issued on the property for this work.
So we have construction that was done on a property based upon a site plan that was submitted but was not built to according to the same specifications without a valid building permit?
Correct. Yeah, the way I understand it, and when the stairs are built, they're all, all the stairs are okay, they're within the six-foot setback, but then when you hit the landing, that's 5 feet 6 inches.
No, I understand that part of it.
Okay.
What I don't understand is why did your client continue to do construction after the building permit was withdrawn?
I don't think he knew, yeah, I don't think he knew.
Your client didn't know that he didn't have a building permit?
Well, he applied for one, and I thought that, see, there's two permits, there's one in 2021, that was issued.
And then withdrawn, and?
No, I don't think it was withdrawn. I don't think it was withdrawn, there was a, no, that, I don't think that permit was withdrawn. I disagree with that. I think what he tried to do was then add, go in for another permit, right, Dan? And that was withdrawn. So the work that he did do, he had a permit for. Except, and I agree with you, it's on the landing, it's 6 inches off.
So even if there was a permit in place, which?
Yeah.
You know, indicate that there may have been, it wasn't built to the specifications of the site plan?
Yeah, because of the 6 inches on the landing, yeah.
I don't really care personally about the why we're here, in terms of 6 inches. What I care about is that there was a site plan submitted, but that it was not constructed to the specifications of the site plan.
It depends where the, since this is a setback?
Based upon the site plan? Is this a simple yes or no? Was it constructed based upon the site plan that was submitted? Yes or no?
I don't know the answer to that.
Thank you. So now the question to the town attorney is whether or not this body has the ability to modify in terms of suspending the fines? And whether or not we even need to take action on that, because we could modify at some point in time. But the way to avoid, I think, my personal opinion, the way to avoid all of this would be to submit variances, because you've already gone through the cost of submitting an appeal at $375 for the cease and desist order, when you could have applied for a variance at $320 and then argued the fact that the cease and desist order is being modified, that the reason the cease and desist order was issued is being modified, therefore, it would resolve the need for the cease and desist because you would then be within compliance, which I think would be looked at more favorably by a board such as this, rather than just don't fine my client because, oops, we built something not in compliance with the site plan that we submitted to the zoning department. But that's my personal opinion. So that's where we are at this point in time. I don't have any additional questions. Does anybody else have any additional questions?
Mr. Chairman? And I would just say, Mr. Llewellyn's question earlier, I would shy away from the board modifying the cease and desist in such a way that you suspend the fines until the adverse possession case is resolved. I would shy away from that. It's a closed call. Right now, the fines are suspended, the implementation of the fines are suspended. Once a ZBA appeal is filed, the fines are told. From here, if you guys, for instance, upheld Dan's decision, property owner could take an appeal to Superior Court, and the fines would still be told until that appeal to the Superior Court is resolved. So I would not modify Dan's order in that sort of way.
No, no, and I understand and appreciate your input. But we still have a situation where we have a existing structure that was built that is not in conformity to our zoning requirements. So whether we were to modify, suspend, anything with the cease and desist, we are now faced with a situation where we are, we have an additional structure that's built that would require two variances regardless of, I shouldn't say regardless, regardless of where we are in terms of the adverse possession case, where we are today and have been evidently, this adverse possession case started a year ago. Where we are today is we have a structure that violates two variances, that is not in conformity with two variances, which may or may not be resolved in a week, a month, a year, 10 years, depending on the result of the case, and any appeals filed thereafter. So we still have a non-conformity. Correct. Which I think could be resolved if the petitioner was just come in here with a variance requesting these? to paraphrase his learned attorney, minor deficiencies. They certainly could apply for a variance.
I do understand that. Yeah, maybe, maybe that's the better route. Yeah. I appreciate your help.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
If you give me a little time to apply for that.
So I have no further questions at this point in time.
Maybe we can just, I'll come in, I'll fill out the application and come see you again next month. I can't do that tonight, obviously.
No, obviously, but you still have time. What's the deadline for the next, today?
What's the deadline for what?
Can we? Yes, we can waive that deadline for this particular case if we were to do so in our administrative session, if that's what we voted to do.
Yeah, as long as we have adequate time to notify it in the paper.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much. I appreciate your help.
Any further questions? Ms. Doolan?
I just have a question. It says that, forgetting about the money violation, do you have to, do they have to remove or legalize the portion that's not in compliance now? Or is everything stays that status quo?
Bringing the property into compliance would consider removing the staircase, cutting the deck back and the second floor platform.
So that will not have to occur?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
In other words, we're not forcing them to do that?
Uh, not, that's your call.
In other words, we can leave everything status quo until either the variance application is received or the adverse position, adverse possession case is solved, is resolved. So in other words, we are not mandating
No.
that
I understand.
the structure be removed. We're just saying that we have a non-conforming structure that requires two variances and it needs to be addressed.
Got it.
Any other comments or questions, I should say, of the petitioner from the, from the board? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Anyone to speak in favor of the petition to appeal the zoning enforcement officer? Against? Let me ask a second time. Anyone else in favor? Okay, hearing none opposed. Sir, go ahead.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Thank you. As I observed and listened-
You name an address for the record, please.
Charles Kermay, 61 Cherry Street, Milford, Connecticut, 06460.
Thank you.
Again. As I observed and listened to the colloquy between the learned members of the board and counsel, I believe an important fact was perhaps not so much glossed over, but just simply not mentioned, which was, when did this supposed adverse possession lawsuit, which has no bearing on the conformity or lack thereof of the structure commence? Well, it was commenced, we believe, specifically in reference to the complaint that the neighbor, Mr. Lombard, or the Lombards, brought to the zoning enforcement officer. And that was in June of 2021, prior to the adverse possession lawsuit. So in other words, that's more than a year ago. And here we are again, more than 12, 13 months later, with counsel on behalf of, quote, Red Buff Rita, again asking to simply kick the can down the road and effectively ignore his client's, frankly, flagrant violation of Stratford zoning rules. Such that, all we're asking is that the board enforce its own rules, as a zoning enforcement officer has done. I don't believe the board has the authority to simply suspend enforcement of those rules and regulations while an independent Superior Court matter related to the potential boundaries of those two properties takes place. Arguably, in theory, it could affect something, but I don't believe that is the board's, within the board's authority to basically nullify its own authority to make a decision based upon whether an existing homeowner is within the bounds of the law. Such that this person, vis a vis its corporation, Red Buff Rita, from what I've heard, apparently chose to build in spite of the lack of a building permit. And moreover, in spite of getting at least one variance to begin with, to build the structure, and then after getting that variance, building even farther out. How outrageous. And here we are, we're being asked again, you're being asked again, to ignore all of those things and just allow this, this person to attempt to cure his or her problems, its corporate problems, through a potential adverse possession action, the outcome of which, as counsel appeared to concede, is not certain. Such that, how long, how long is this neighbor supposed to wait? What, what, what will tomorrow's excuse be? And what will the hardship be when we get to a potential variance application for this square lot in this very regular part of town with this overbuilt property that now has lights that shine into this owner's premises? That has cameras that, that apparently face and monitor their ability to use the property? It's outrageous. We'd ask that you please deny the appeal. Thank you. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Opposition? Hearing done. The chair will entertain a motion to table or close the public hearing on the appeal.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing portion for item five.
A motion to close it. Do I hear a second? Second, Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Motion to adjourn the public hearing as that is our last active petition?
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn the public hearing for this evening.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second? Second, Ms. Witham. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will now begin the administrative session of the Board of Zoning Appeals to address the items listed on the public hearing. And the work agenda starts at 8:37. Okay, item number one is the items listed on the public hearing. We have already tabled petition number one, so the floor is open for any action on petition number two, 119 Swanson Avenue. Anyone wish to take it off the table?
Yes, sir. For Chairman, I make a motion to take item number two, 1119 Swanson Avenue, off the table.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I make a second if they make the modification to reduce the deck size, so they're in compliance.
You can once we've taken it off, now we're open for discussion. So all those in favor of taking it off the table, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Doolan?
As long as, for 119 Swanson Avenue, as long as they make the modifications for the rear deck to be in compliance, I would be in approval of the rest of it.
I need some clarification on that motion because if they're in compliance, they won't need a variance.
I thought you needed two variances.
Oh, there's one for coverage as well. So you're talking about the specific variance for rear yard setback, correct?
Right.
Hey, I have a motion on the ta, on the, on the floor at the moment. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it. He agreed. He said he would be able to do that.
Okay, second by Ms. Gibson. Discussion on the motion. Anyone wish to discuss it? Mr. Llewellyn?
More for administrative purposes, to the zoning officer. We're, we have the capability of being able to kind of take this action. I feel like we're kind of splitting the baby. I understand that he had two exemptions he was looking for under item 4.2. Obviously, if the zoning regulations aren't further broken down, you know, we're kind of in this bind where he's now going to partially comply, but still needs a variance.
Yeah, you got, the zoning commission does have the authority to put conditions on their approval. This would reduce the number of variances which are compliant with the regulations as well.
So as I understand it, that would go from two variances to one variance. The variance of the rear yard setback would be denied for the, for the 25 to 23.7. And the coverage, obviously the ratio would change, but you'd still require a variance for the ratio?
Yes.
We have clarification on that. Any further discussion?
No. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the, the partial variance for 1119 Swanson Ave. As stipulated and discussed by us here at this meeting.
Okay, just for the record, that would be to deny the rear yard setback from 25 to 23.7, but to vote in the affirmative to allow the coverage to increase above the 25%.
Correct, correct. Exactly, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. Do we hear a second?
I'll second.
Second. Discussion on that motion. Hearing done. Oh, go ahead.
I just don't see where that makes such a big difference. If I was concerned about anything, but I would still approve it, is the, the coverage going from 25% to 33% over, you know, a foot, one foot, three inches for the rear setback does seem silly to me. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor of the, of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed?
I'm opposed. I would rather see it approved as it is.
I'm opposed as well, so that means the motion passes 3-2. Does that require a four? I don't believe it does, right?
Yeah, variance requires four, but that was, that was a motion to modify the approval of variance, right?
Correct. That's a motion to modify the approval. I'm not sure if that requires four or not. Now we have to go back on it.
I think it needs, I think you need four votes to approve variance modified or not.
So that was on the modification, so we would then need a-
Motion to withdraw the modification?
Yeah, but you didn't make that motion. It would have to be someone who made the motion.
That would be me.
Yes, you made, you made the motion to withdraw the modification. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. Right.
Can we, can we bring it back to discussion or no?
Well, it's still open for discussion because we haven't, we haven't voted on it in its finality. We, we approved the modification 3-2, but then we still have to approve the variance. As I understand it correctly, so we'd still have, the modification has gone forth, so now we have a petition in front of us that requires a four-vote plurality to approve what we've just modified. So we need to make, okay. That's correct. So as we-
I can withdraw my motion, then. Can I do that?
Well, the motion was made by Ms. Doolan.
I mean, my-
Ms. Doolan would have to make the motion, would have to do the withdrawal.
Okay, then, I, Ms. Doolan, I will make a motion to withdraw my request-
Does the second concur? Okay, so a motion to withdraw the modification. So any further discussion on that?
So just to clarify, what's out there now to be voted on is just as submitted?
No. What's out there now is to withdraw the modification. Then we have to vote on the final petition.
Okay.
So we changed it. We were going to vote on it. It's been withdrawn, so now it's going to go back if this passes.
Okay.
So all those in favor of the withdrawal of the modification, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll entertain a motion for approval of the original application.
I'll make a motion to approve the original application.
Motion by Ms. Witham. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Gibson. Discussion on the motion. All I'll indicate is, is that based upon the zoning, zoning, the planning staff reviews, that based on the existing non-conformity, there does appear to be illegitimate hardship allowing the grant of the variance. So that's all I will discuss. That's my comments. So I'll call the motion. All those in favor of granting the petition on 119 Swanson, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All set. Next up on the hit parade. Any action on 15 Third Avenue? Anyone want to take it off the table?
I'll take 15 Third Avenue off the table.
Thank you, Ms. Witham. We have a motion to take 15 Third off the table. Do I hear a second? Second, by Ms. Doolan. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 15 Third Avenue is now open for business. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve 15 Third Avenue.
Motion by Mr. Llewellyn, second by Ms. Doolan. All, discussion, please. Anyone wishes to discuss it? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 15 Third Avenue is approved. 1110 Chapel Street, the appeal. Does anyone want to take that off the table for discussion? I'll make a motion to take it off the table for discussion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Llewellyn. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. I heard both, both sides to the argument. And the simple reality is, is that we have a non-conforming structure that has been, that has been built. The cease and desist will be, could, could be appealed and it could become null and void at some point in time down the line if the petitioner was to submit for two zoning variances. What I would like to see happen on this is that we deny the appeal with the stipulation that the petitioner has 10 business days to go to the zoning department and apply for two variances necessary to bring the structure in, within compliance. I don't really care about this adverse possession. It has nothing to do with what we're talking about here right now. It may or may not go to fruition. It may or may not resolve the issue. That's irrelevant. What is relevant is that we have a non-conforming structure. We have a statement from the attorney indicating that he would be willing to consider bringing variances. Obviously, he's got to talk to his, his, his client. And those variances could either be voted up or down, but at least it would be a way to remedy the existing deficiencies. So that's what I would put in the form of a motion. Do I hear a second of my motion?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Llewellyn. Discussion on the motion. Quite frankly, I think that is the best way to resolve this issue. If he files an appeal of this, God bless him, let him go to State Superior Court and let them tell us we can't find him. I'm less concerned about the fines as I am to bring a non-conformity into conformity. So that's where I am. Any other discussion?
I just, um, so it stays, the property stays as is, like the other attorneys point, where the, the lights and whatever, you know, the neighbor is putting up with the cameras and the lights.
The lights and camera would have to be an issue that is not before the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Board of Zoning Appeals is talking about site plans and whether or not something requires a variance. That would be more of a civil metal or matter, or a matter to be brought to the police department to say that there is some type of intrusion. The lighting could be brought to, I think, the building department, though, right? If you're, if you're a structure and you're shining a light on another person's property, that could be brought, I think, to building? Building and/or health department, but it's not the Board of Zoning Appeals. Thank you, though. Okay, hearing done. All those in favor of denying the appeal, but giving the applicant a window of 10 business days to apply to the zoning office for variances required to bring the property in conformity? So that's what's unfair. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries 5-0. Please notify Attorney, oh, there's Attorney Bellis. You have your marching orders. You could either choose to do them or not do them. Your client, it's up to you. But I, I think that solves a remedy, gives us an opportunity to get a remedy solved. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the August 2nd meeting. Chair, entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of our August 2nd meeting.
Motion by Mr. Llewellyn. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Witham. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Cam site. Any cam sites tonight? Erosion and sediment. Members' concerns, comments?
I just wanted to talk about that Barnum Avenue really quickly. Can they, when we bring it back, will there be an opportunity to just-
It's, it's an open petition. We're not allowed to discuss it. If you have a generalized question about-
Yeah, it was about the, the part where you talked about the traffic. Was that associated, what you said?
There is a traffic control, there's a traffic authority. I think the Stratford-
Stratford Authority?
Yeah, I think, for some reason, I don't remember even, I don't think I've even been on it at some time as a citizen. But there is a traffic control board, isn't there?
Yes.
There is? It just interests me as a neighbor, so.
Yeah, and it's made up of, I think, the police chief, fire chief, designate of the mayor and-
I believe, I believe John Casey's on it because we had some discussions about closing King Street with regards to the Stratford High project. And we had to go before that traffic authority or traffic-
Yeah.
They don't meet regularly, it doesn't sound like.
No, they have to have something to discuss- No, they have to have something to discuss.
Oh, okay.
So if somebody wants to bring forth something for them to discuss, they would have to take a look at it.
All right, thanks.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Chairman, I hope it's a question more for the, the town attorney or zoning officer, but in terms of making a decision on a cease and desist order, just because it's kind of my first time seeing that, what are the options that were available to us?
Abol Dan's issuance, reverse Dan's issuance of the cease and desist order, or modify the term of the cease and desist.
Then, in, in terms of how we conducted ourselves tonight, I'd much rather judge an application against our zoning regulations than have to be forced to judge the conduct of a town employee. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you for leading us through that.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other items that we want to bring up? Hearing none. Our next meeting is October 4th, so to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Llewellyn, second, by Ms. Witham. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We're off the record at 8:51. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.